Confirmation never hurts. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending tonight and for convening for a work session on this topic. As you know, when we discussed it initially on the October 6th Finance and Administration Committee Agenda, we, and that being medical benefits renewals for our employees, we did not yet have what we consider to be complete information yet back from our carrier, Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas City, and we were interested in trying to improve upon their initial offer for renewal for medical services. So thank you for allowing us time to do that, and we've gone back to them and have a new proposal to present to you. We did, let me start sharing my screen. So as we recall, the first answer back from Blue Cross for 2022 Medical Services was going to be a 19% increase over the cost that we've been enjoying in 2021. That follows flat renewal proposals for the past previous two years. So quite a jump, but when considered with the other two flat rate years, it averages out a bit better, but we still thought it was worth a try to go back and see if we could improve upon that. We'll be, as I said, sharing the recommendation that we do have back and then talking too about how we are strategizing for future years. So we have something for you for 2022, but also are very interested as a result of this year's negotiations, thinking about plan design changes for future years. So first, when we went back to Blue Cross Blue Shield and said we were interested in seeing something better, what other offerings do you have? They came back and said, basically shared some information with us. As you know, because of our size, we ensure less, fewer than 100 lives. We can't access that claims data per se, but they did indicate that their underwriting team, based on our usage and claims information, recommended a 39% increase. Blue Cross did better than that for us, based on the relationship that we have with them and to maintain us as a customer, as a client for them. So 39 compared to 19, still, you know, still interested in seeing what we could do. But we do have claims that are over $100,000, five of those at least in the, in the past, you know, information that they could share with us. They shared information about loss ratio and the industry standard. They want to see approximately 75% ratio between premiums and claims information. And just two months' worth of information that they shared with what mission is achieving is 180% loss ratio for the month of June, July rather, and 181 in August. So we're, we're missing the mark as far as their underwriters are concerned. And that just is further confirmation that we were right to decide not to go probably back to market. You never know, but that was probably the right call. So we're moving forward and looking to see where in plan, plan, design change, we could reduce that 19% cost increase. So that would be looking at definitely an increase in premiums, but changing the deductibles or out-of-pocket maximums to accomplish a bit more bottom line savings for all of us. So having done that, we show what is recommended, and the slide doesn't reflect it, but they came back to us and said, with these changes for deductibles and out-of-pocket maximums, we could be looking at a total that was 16% compared to that 19%. And when you look at that, and I have this in a later slide, but if you recall, it's a savings of about $26,000 over what we provided to you on October 6th. So if you see the deductibles and out-of-pocket maximums, that swing from the current plan design that we have had for several years to the column on the right that shows increases for deductibles and out-of-pocket maximums in that range. If you have any questions or need me to review those, but it's a, it's a swing of $500 in some cases to 3,000, and I think the upper range for those increases. So this is really to just manage those premium increases and the bottom line number for us. And you do see too, this slide is where we show the spread between the three plans. So as I know you all are familiar, we have the Preferred Care Blue Buy Up PPO Plan, the Blue Select, and then the Spira Care. And you see that, that split between 31, 23, and 12 currently enrolled in each of those plans. Yes?
Did they, were they willing to indicate whether this was COVID-related at all?
I don't recall hearing that. I don't think so. I don't know if we can make that argument for the flat increase last year, but we really haven't heard indications related to that. Any other questions from here? I'll go to the premium increase slide next. So here you can see the plan breakouts across the plans, but also across the tiers for employee, employee spouse, employee child, and family. So first, we've got the current plan amounts, then the renewal amounts in the second column, the employer contributions, which is that 80% versus the 20% employee contribution. And we did recommend that we maintain that ratio cost sharing. And then the last two columns are the difference that the employee would see for the month compared to the pay period impact for them. So a range upwards of $40, $39.86 for a pay period. On the lower end, that $10.18 for a pay period increase. And there are no questions there. We did just share this historical look back that Lockton provides to us as we look over our net medical costs projected to be 917,433 in 2022. And taking just that health and welfare budgeted amount for all the departments for 2022 budget, we did have that 998,500 number that is reflective of full, no vacancies, full staffing, and the locked-in numbers are, I think, just actual, actual enrollments. So it's, it's 66 individuals compared to our full staffing, FTE. So that's the recommendation. I don't know if there are questions there. I'll go to the next slide, and we'll talk about kind of what we did consider in getting to this recommendation and things that we chose not to bring forward as part of the recommendation, but we do think warrant discussion for future years. So that's where I'm headed, if that's okay for everyone. We have the three plans. So that has come about over time. As first, Spira Care came online and was an offering that Blue Cross Blue Shield did provide, that EPO option. The premium costs are very comparable between the Blue Select and the Spira Care, and the hospital network is the same between the two plans. So the difference primarily is the model, the clinic model of the Spira Care that you use and, and that sort of walk-in feel with kind of rotating providers potentially, as well as no co-pays. So it's cheaper on the per-visit basis for while you're in-network and at the, and receiving care at those clinics, the co-pay is not a factor. So it's a cost-saving measure, but reflects in a lot of ways the Blue Select Plus. So we did hear has a benchmark against other firms that having three plan offerings for a firm our size is, is unusual. Just 6% of those firms of that size do something like that. So we did reflect back again about how that came to be, and part of it is hospital access for where our employees live within the metropolitan area and providing that close, close access for hospitals and network where, where we have employees who live in Eastern Jackson County and other far reaches of our, of our metro. That's slightly less of a concern than it was initially when Spira Care opened. They had many fewer clinic locations, and they've continued to open those. And now the coverage is fairly consistent across the metro. So that does help, even though they still share the hospital network with Blue Select Plus. So I think our recommendation for future years is to look at this and to say, are there, with education and more information to our employees, would more employees migrate to a different plan? Once they kind of had heard from those who had used the Spira Care model, who understood kind of really what that is offering, and could also hear from coworkers or from others who have experienced it, what that might be like, or just some more, just kind of full information comparisons. Once we can provide that to our staff, if they, if, if that was palatable and that felt right, then, then maybe we would evaluate having two of those plans that were so, so comparable. The other, oh yeah.
I, I like the idea of a, a plan with no co-pay. Have we considered to the idea of potentially putting in like an HSA component with that? With like a match at all, or anything along those lines?
I think that's among the things we, we might be considering. Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. I think it's in our heads for sure. And then, so that employee preferences is sort of what I was getting to, hearing really about the experience that people are having with Spira, now that there's been some time gone by, as well as just the preferences between those types of things. So where do you want to spend your dollars? What's, what's the best comfort? How important is specialists having the same, you know, physician, those kinds of things among our employee group? We did also, well, as I mentioned before, the location of hospitals and outpatient specialists and access to those, what really is the lay of the land now, three years later. Then also, we talked a lot about the employer contribution between plans. So there's quite a bit of variation there if we're doing 80/20 split, no matter the plan and no matter the tier. So we could look to a model that the employer contribution was a flat rate, and employees could choose to economize or not based on their needs and preferences. So that's something that we would consider also. And that goes for, you know, both the plans and the, and the employee family tiers as well. So I think those are covering kind of some of the contributions. We were interested in, in keeping those increases this year into a manageable amount. Something that, you know, definitely we are recognizing employee health, or you know, health costs across the board are increasing. We've talked already here about how we will budget in future years, and if there's savings to be had at the end of a year, marking that for insurance against future increases. So how to educate our employees and really talk together as a, as a team about the, the future years and how we'll all be contributing to that and sharing kind of in that burden, and what's the best way to do that as we go forward. So some increase, definitely not holding anyone apart from the impact of the 16% increase, but certainly trying to do a balanced job of applying that. I don't know if you have more to add. Yeah.
My concern is that we're trying to retain employees. And while we're trying to keep our pay rates at a level that is attractive and retains employees, this almost adds another burden. It really takes away, you know, monthly funds from individuals, especially if they're a family in terms of the cost. So any comments about that?
That's always a factor when we look at benefit renewals in any year. So we're always very sensitive down to that payroll level of, you know, what is, what is that tolerance? Is that gonna, is, is what we're looking at in either a plan design change or a premium increase going to impact someone's ability to cover a utility bill or, or purchase groceries, or whatever the basic necessities of life? So it's a bit of a balancing act to stay, we have to be realistic in kind of bringing our employees along in reasonable increments, because healthcare, healthcare costs don't stay, they aren't stable, they aren't flat, even with the flat renewals that we experienced in 2019 and 2020. And so we say, how do we, sort of like what we were talking about at the committee meeting about looking at budgeting, and, you know, we budget maybe for 5%, and if we get a 0% renewal, then we take that 5% and we set it aside to help even out the peaks and the valleys. So you want to do that with your employees as well, because you don't want to wait and have this increase much more significant in, you know, every three years or something. Incrementally, they don't notice it as much. So they've benefited in 2019 and 2020 by having absolutely no impact. So we, and we were giving good merit increases during those time periods. So employees were able to really take home and pocket all of that. The other thing that we really took a step back between the committee meeting was, is we looked at, because we know we've had this really positive momentum, both inside and outside the organization, with the classification and compensation changes that were approved. So I don't, we don't want to chip away at that goodwill and that progress that we've made on that front by having to do this. So when we looked at, we, we broke that down and just looked across the organization, what was the average per payroll increase that resulted from the classification and compensation study? And I think it was $238 a month. Okay? And so then we broke it down even further and said, okay, for those people who perhaps didn't get the market adjustment, some of our employees, because they were appropriately in their range, just got a merit increase, they're the ones that would be most significantly impacted by a change in premiums. And so when, when you break that down, there were 13 employees that, that had, whose impact to their per month, yes, per month gross pay was $125 or less. Broke that down even further, said what, what, some of them don't carry health insurance coverage with us, so they're going to have absolutely no impact related to this. And that's why we looked at and making this recommendation, looking at where everybody fell on that spectrum when you're talking about $39 for family coverage on the Blue Select PPO Plan as being the highest per payroll increase that you would see. We felt like the tolerance was there without taking that away from the employees. It's really hard to, you know, to come up very specifically with that, because you also have to remember that their contributions are pre-tax. So it's not really that full impact that you see there, because we take their medical plan deductions pre-tax. So there's some savings there that are automatically built into it. And, and so I think as we look historically at what, at what we've done and what that impact is for particularly those people who are on the lower end of the, the market or, or just receiving the merit increases, and we think that is still, still reasonable, and I think moves us in, in the right direction for, for this year. I mean, I think when we look at the claims data that, that has generally been provided to us, again, some of those claims are expected to be ongoing, which means that we could have a bumpy year again next year. And so I think, again, if we hold off and we just don't share in any of that increase with the employees this year, I think we're going to be facing a much, you know, kind of steeper hill to climb next year. So that's kind of the, the factors that we, you know, that, that we look at. Nobody likes to have an increase in their health insurance premiums. But I, I think it's, you know, the city shouldn't, I think we have to just continue to build that model that we have to share in this, and we have to be, you know, responsible in this. And I think as, as we look in, in future years, as Emily was talking about, about, you know, building in some focus groups, talking with people about how do we incentivize? You know, right now, I mean, some employers will, if, if the spouse has coverage or a partner has coverage through another employer, they're required to take it through that other employer, right? And so I think there are a variety of different things that we can consider to really engage our employees more in, in terms of how they select their healthcare. When you've had two years of 0% increases, inertia, right? You, it's just easy. You don't move, right? You're comfortable with it, and there's no reason for me to really spend any time during open enrollment thinking about my healthcare needs or the, or what I might be looking at in the future. So happy to, yeah. I, it was pretty unremarkable. I mean, they're pretty satisfied. Again, we, we hear, what we hear generally throughout the year is more anecdotal. So someone who either has a really positive or a really negative experience, and we hear, hear some of both. One of the things that we rely heavily on Locked In is for those who are maybe experiencing some challenges with the healthcare, we'll get them connected and to some resources in a different way and help, help folks navigate those challenges. But I think generally, people have been satisfied with, you know, they, they will always tell you that they would like to pay less in premiums. But I do think, and I think what they told us in the last survey was that rather than increasing or adding any additional benefits, they would rather just have that in compensation increases. It is, and that's one of the things that we will, we'll do a little bit more benchmarking on. One of the things that we talked about is, the other option to really look at is kind of that defined, really that defined contribution. So a lot of times, local government employers will actually incentivize employee-only coverage at 100% or maybe a 90% level, and then kind of have that, that scale back, so that really the city's net cost is not changing at all in our overall plan expenses, regardless of what choices an employee makes. Because right now, we're kind of at the, I mean, we generally know, and there's not a lot of movement among plans, but these numbers could change dramatically if everybody shifted to the, you know, the Blue Select or the Preferred Care Blue Plan. So looking at those options to say, where are we and can we align? I, I think probably we're a little bit on the higher end at 80/20. We're probably right in the middle of the pack or a little bit higher. There are probably more people that are doing a 90/10 split or incentivizing 100% of employee-only coverage. Yeah. And then let me go back to, to I think your HSA question. So in the past, as we've evaluated overall plan design and plans, plans that we offer, we have looked at, and we've talked for probably the last eight to 10 years about an, an HSA option. In most instances, the employer is obviously seating, right? You're, you're seating the HSA. The math didn't work previously in terms of being able to feel like we could incentivize people to, to take advantage of that health savings account. And so part of our challenge is, but I think it's worth looking at again, particularly as we look at some changes for the future. So we evaluate that really almost every year and, and to see if it's an option that, that can make sense for folks. And it just, it's, it's not one, again, it's just, it comes down to numbers, and it's not one where we feel like we can really go out and promote and, and have people participate in that plan, or we're going to drive just our healthy people to that plan? And then what does that do to your plan costs for the other people who, you know, maybe don't have the flexibility to, to, to consider an HSA?
So just to get clarification, are we, we have $116,000 increases that correct over last, over what is projected for this year?
Yes.
So the, the employees are absorbing 20% of that, is that correct?
Yes.
So if
No.
Okay, I'm, I'm Well, that's what I mean.
So the total
116, right? But they would be, they, they have, they are absorbing within their pay, pay 20% of that total, is that correct?
Because what you're seeing on the last slide is, is all plans, so it's not just medical.
Well, that's what, yeah, that's what I was looking at.
Let me, let me get to the one that's just the medical. Did he give you the historical on the back? The back of this one?
I guess what I'm leaning to is this question. What would be the cost to the city if for this coming year, since we haven't had the dialogue with the employees, if the city absorbed the increase, the portion of increase that the employees would incur until we have that discussion with them over the year for the next time this goes out to market?
Yeah, and I'll sit down here in just a second and do the math on that. But I guess my, and I would push back a little bit and say, this is not new. This is not a new phenomenon for the employees. We've, you know, it, the last two years have probably been maybe the only time in my tenure with this organization where we did not pass along some portion of that increase with that cost sharing. And it's, it's been a work in progress. And Councilmember Kring will probably remember there was a time period when 100% of employee health insurance was paid. And to transition back into a cost-sharing model in the early 2000s was incredibly painful. And we, and we did that incrementally. And so we started, I think, with about a 5%, they were contributing about 5%, and the goal was to try to get to that 80/20 level. And we, so we accomplished that over several years, and then that's kind of where we've been. But the, I think the employees' assumption is if there's an increase in the plan, we're going to share in that proportionately with, with the city's costs. So while people would grumble about it, you know, it, it's, it's not something that, that would be foreign to them or uncommon. The challenge, I think, again, and, and having lived through that transition from 100% paid to sharing those costs, if we don't share in that incrementally, we lose more ground from kind of a relationship and a morale standpoint than we do by saying, here's what we think is a reasonable, tolerable impact to you on a, you know, on a per-pay period basis. So let me sit down and do the math on that, just to answer your question.
I would just like to say, I, I like his idea, and even if we couldn't absorb 100%, we should discuss at least some of it. And even if we couldn't absorb 100%, we should discuss at least some of it.
I don't know if we have anything else to say. Yeah, we need filler.
Well, in the meantime, maybe Penn can tell us what happened to the railing over there on the Beverly Street side. Okay.
I, I just put the slide back up that has the difference per pay period on there. And I mean, the scenario that Laura outlined for some employees in term, in, in relationship to their merit or classification bump is, is a small number of employees. You know, there, there's a lot that, that did improve quite a bit with the adjustments on October 1st. And they would be looking at, you know, potentially any of these lower numbers per pay period. And I think by, by a small and tolerable adjustment per pay period, but not no change. So some change that's, that's manageable allows us to start that conversation with our staff and to talk about that and to talk about the realities and to talk about costs and to talk about what options we do have as a small firm versus really not much choi, you know, where we can make impacts and where we really can't. And kind of the realities of some of that. And I think I'm interested in those conversations. I'm interested in having all of that in the beginning of the next year to sort of, but you have to have an entree and, and this would be that. So that we can start talking about, you really should evaluate what your family's needs are and look at those plans. And look at what, you know, we have the cost calculator that people can use to factor in what they might realistically expect. And they need to, you know, they need to know what a co-pay is. They need to know how that impacts and, and really walk and, and think through those things. And I think because we have the inertia and that the SpiraCare is a relatively new product, that there could be some that if they were uncomfortable with the hit to their per paycheck cost, there's another option that they may not have considered, since we only have those 12 or so staff members on the Spira. So we are offering a fairly, you know, depending on your health situation, I know it's not a choice for everyone, but we could open that door for those conversations if this, this was pain that was intolerable for some. Yeah. Yeah. It is, it is.
And so it's $145,000 total is the increase with the renewal, with the plan design changes. And so the employees are taking on 29,000 of that $145,000. So apologize, it took me a while to get to the right page to figure that out. And, and I think when we looked at plan design changes, we look at benchmarking, benchmarking data that Locked In provides. So we're looking at co-pays, we're looking at, you know, whether that's office visit co-pays, emergency room, urgent care, prescription. We're looking at that, the deductibles and the out-of-pocket maximums. We're really in line in terms of office visit co-pays. We didn't make any adjustments to any of those and we haven't. This will be the third year in a row where we haven't made adjustments to the office visit co-pays, the urgent care co-pays, the emergency room prescription. And we, and that's why we looked at making those adjustments really on the deductible and the out-of-pocket ma, maximum side. So obviously that, that does have an impact for people who are utilizing healthcare. But we were on the lower end from the benchmarking data in terms of where our plans were with some of those, some of those targets, if you will. So really by, by making this move in some respects, we're squaring up to a certain extent with, with our peers, whether it's in the region or other government agencies or Locked In's, you know, kind of book of business as we look at those kinds of things. And that's where I think employees often feel, I mean, people who are going to hit out-of-pocket maximum. And so those big numbers that you see, like that $3,000 jump, that's an out-of-network, out-of-pocket maximum. And our in-network utilization is so high with our employees that we don't have people where that out-of-network, you know, out-of-network maximum or really even the deductible is much of a factor. Because our folks are really good about u, using, utilizing the in-network providers. So we try to balance all of those kinds of things. Again, move people down, down this road. I mean, the fear would be, you know, if we got, if we didn't do anything this year and we got another 20% increase next year, then, then what do we do? Can we, you know, can we afford to make that up? Or can we all just kind of keep, stay on this journey together and? Yes, Sally. Okay, so any, any other additional information? We do, we do have a special meeting scheduled for six o'clock ahead of the committee meetings next week for you to kind of do, take the final vote on the employee benefit package. And if there's any additional information you want to see between now and then, let us know. We can, we'll be happy to provide that. Or if you have questions that, that come up, you know, over the course of the next week, as you have a chance to digest this a little bit more.
Now Penn can update us with the information about the railing.